To another neighborhood board meeting for the Kahala Wildlife Neighborhood Board Meeting for number three. My name is Christian DeCavedo. I am the Chair of the Neighborhood Board. Good evening to everybody who's appeared in person and online. We do not have quorum this evening, so it is going to be hopefully a pretty, a pretty quick one. Let's get off, right off the bat, let's start off with the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Honolulu Fire Department with us this evening? Going once, going twice. No, Mira's HPD. We'll move on to our brothers in blue over at the Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant Mira, good to have you this evening.
Hi, good evening, appreciate that, thank you. So we're gonna start off with statistics for last month. We have motor vehicle thefts at four, burglaries at eight, thefts at 20, unauthorized entry to motor vehicle at 23, calls for service 5,865. And then, given the recent, a lot of pedestrian accidents going on, we're gonna do pedestrian tips to include drivers as well. So for pedestrians, tip will be to yield to approaching vehicles while crossing, even if you have the right of way. Make eye contact with drivers to ensure that they see you. Be especially careful of vehicles that are burning, turning at intersections. Drivers may be looking out for other vehicles instead of pedestrians. And for drivers to look out for pedestrians who may be hidden from view by other vehicles that have stopped, and anticipate the difficulties of the elderly or young children who are crossing the street.
Awesome, thank you for that update. Do we have any questions from any community board members?
A quick question. Last meeting you provided a stat regarding speeding citations or warnings with the speed cameras. I think there's some 30,000 a month or some large number. I just wanted to clarify if that was for five miles an hour over speed limit or 11 miles an hour?
Oh, I'm not familiar with that statistic. I didn't do last month's board. I did just, coincidentally, I just happened to see something on the news about that this morning, the 30,000 sold tickets. And I can't speak on behalf of them, just say what I saw on the news. I think it was five miles, five miles over on that. But I can follow up with that regarding that specific statistic.
Thank you.
Do we have any community questions, Lieutenant Mira? Lieutenant, personally, I wanted to, to thank some of the folks you got over there. About a week and a half ago, I had a mentally unwell person pulling knife on a couple of my employees out in the field. HPD showed up within two minutes, restrained the woman with no undue force, handled the situation great, but just feeling very confident in the community's support, just the way you guys handled things, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you for saying, thank you.
You have a great evening, thanks so much.
Thank you, good night.
All right, up next, do we have a representative from the Board of Water Supply? Representative from the Board of Water Supply?
Good evening, I'm here, do you hear me?
Hey, good evening, Lorna, yes we can.
Hi, very good, awesome, I'm doing good, thank you. Yeah, I do have a quick report as usual, so last, I just have one main break to report for last month, and that was on Alii Koa Street on March 26th. The announcement I have this week, actually this month, is about Detector Leak Week. We're having events, so we want to encourage you folks to chase down and repair those pesky leaks during this annual Detector Leak Week program campaign. It actually started last week Sunday, and we had a kickoff at Pearl Ridge, but it's gonna be closing, the event's closing on Saturday at Kahala Mall, so encourage you folks to be there between 11 and 1:00. We're gonna stop by for some hands-on leak detection tips, toilet leak detection tie tablets, interactivities, and we'll have some swag plus chance to win some prizes. So just wanna encourage everybody to work together to make every drop count. And if you got more information, you can go onto our website, wwwboardofwatersupply.com and then slash D A L W, which stands for Detect a Leak Week, D A L W. Quickly on another announcement I do have, I don't think they announced it, this one, but the city is launching a HNL Alert for emergency notifications. So the sitting county has launched HNL Alert. It's a new mass notification system that provides residents and visitors information about severe weather, emergencies, and other situations affecting city services via text, push notifications, or email. HNL Alert replaces the current hnl.info notification system. And there's two ways to sign up. There's customized alerts, you can create an account at hnlalert.gov and select preferred topics to receive notifications via email or text or push notifications from the app. The other ways, you can just only get urgent alerts only, and that one, it says text HNL Alert to 888, and there's four sevens, so 888, 7777, for critical safety alerts by text. Those registrations is gonna be needed for that. If you need more information, that's can be found on honolulu.gov/dem. That is all I have for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
Any board questions for Lorna? Any community questions for Lorna? Lorna, are we still doing the rain barrel giveaway? Is that still happening, the reimbursement program?
Yes, we do have the rebates for the rain barrels, I believe it's $40 rebates currently, so encourage you folks to do that. It was a good day to catch some rain because it was pouring. But yeah, we do have that, we have a lot of other rebates on our website, so encourage you folks to look at that too.
Awesome, well, thank you so much for making the time this evening, it's greatly appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you.
Double checking one more time, Honolulu Fire Department, any representatives from the Honolulu Fire Department? Well, up next, we've got my personal favorite, Casey Abe from the Department of Transportation. How we doing this evening, Casey?
Oh, doing fine, Chair. Good evening, Chair Christian, members of the Wildlife Kahala Neighborhood Board, Casey Abe from the State DOT Highways Division. At last month's meeting, there was a concern about potholes along the H1 on ramp westbound. During my inspection last week, I have to report that our maintenance crew managed most of potholes, especially the larger pothole around the manhole cover. During the February's meeting, I mentioned we had a hard time removing the homeless encampment near the Wildlife off ramp under the pedestrian overpass. I'm happy to report we finally cleared the homeless encampment, and our homeless coordinator will do periodic checks to ensure the homeless do not return. At my Cooley Old Colony Eki Neighborhood Board meeting on April 2nd, a board member reported a homeless encampment under the Wildlife New East Stream Bridge. Our homeless coordinator and his crew cleared the encampment on April 7th. At last month's meeting, I mentioned about the cut lock to our security gate near Kapaka East Stream Bridge. Our maintenance crew installed a new lock and welded the gate closed to discourage the homeless from cutting our lock again. But unfortunately, during my field investigation last week, the chain unlocked to our security gate near Wildlife New East Stream Bridge was cut, so I worked with our maintenance crew on securing that gate. At last month's meeting, I mentioned there were a lot of graffiti, but our maintenance crew were able to paint over or remove most of the graffiti. But during my field inspection last week, the graffiti artists are still out there, so I'll continue to work with our maintenance crew to paint over their artwork. And at last month's meeting, I mentioned there was a lot of overgrowth, I have to report, our maintenance crew cut back the overgrowth. Working with our maintenance crew, we repainted the guard posts around the traffic's new controller box at Unakai Street, and the poles protecting the concrete column near Asajjo. We removed the old sign installation plate and posts to prevent a future accident near the Kapaka East Stream Bridge going eastbound towards Colony High School, and replaced the damaged utility box cover at Kilua Avenue near our Lohar Gas Station. Also, we slow, we are slowly fixing the sidewalks and curb ramps along the Makai side of Wildlife Avenue to prevent pedestrians from tripping due to an uneven pavement. And finally, starting next month, our contractor, Mocon Corporation, will be starting construction on our approximately $4.21 million seismic retrofit project on both the inbound and outbound lanes of our H1 VADA that goes over the Wildlife Avenue. Tenant's completion date is March 2026. Working hours is Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and detours will be implemented. A project website to find out the latest information on the project status, detours, and lane closures will be ready before the construction starts. This concludes my report, I can take any questions at this time.
Do any board members have questions for Mr. Abe? Do any community members have any questions for Mr. Abe? All right, Casey, thank you so much for your time this evening, as always, it's a pleasure. Thank you for getting all that work done, and we look forward to seeing what gets done next month.
Thank you.
Have a good one. All right, up next, filling of vacancies, we do have, I believe, two open positions, two open positions right now, and I do believe that there is a candidate sitting out in the field with us today, waiting to take her place at the podium, ready to rise up on behalf of the community. Aloha, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, give a quick little introduction, and then from there, we get to vote and...
Aloha, I'm Aloha McGuffey, and I was actually introduced to the Wildlife Neighborhood Board by Rich Turbin when he attended one of our meetings at the Kahala Hotel and Resort a few years ago, and also Lucinda Pyle. So I'm really encouraged to be part of this group. They were good models for me in terms of being a civil servant and representative, and so I'm looking forward to it. I am a consultant with a company called Uluma'au, and my husband Mark is the president, and he's here as well with me. We do sustainability plans for our clients, as well as, that includes also environmental conservation, preservation of indigenous peoples, and education, agriculture, renewable energy, all of that good stuff. So we look forward to bringing up what we can to this committee and seeing how we can help our community here in the Wildlife Kahala area. Mahalo Nui.
So thank you for that lovely introduction. Do any board members have any questions for Aloha? Do any community members have any questions for Aloha? All right, so Brian, do we have you online? Yep, there you are. All right, so motion to take a vote to bring her on to the board for the position at large? Oh, perfect. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, never mind, all right, we're slowing down in bureaucracy here. Sylvia, aye. Lee, aye. Colin, Brian?
Aye.
Christian, aye. All right, the ayes have it. Welcome to the Kahala Wildlife Neighborhood Board. Aloha McGuffey, and that's...
Yeah.
We need to make, we need to make sure you're 21, all right? This is state policy, all right? We're gonna do a quick three-minute recess just while we get all this filled out, and then we should be good to roll. It's truly just a well-funded position. All right, listen, do we have Sylvia? Okay, perfect, let's end our recess then and keep progressing forward. Would any of the members on the board like to report their attendance at other meetings? Head shakes across the board, I love it, guys, we are killing it this evening. Elected official reports, let's see, do I have a representative from the governor's office? Is Patty Jettie here this evening?
I am here, Christian, hello.
Hey Patty, how we doing?
Aloha Kako, it's good to see everyone. Sorry I missed the last meeting, I was sick for a good five weeks there, and do not recommend that to anyone, so it's good to be back. I have pasted in the comments the governor's newsletter, and I'm here to take any questions that you have that I can bring back to the governor's office.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the governor's office? Does anybody in the community have any questions for the governor's office? Patty, I think this might be the easiest evening you're gonna have in a long, long time. Thank you so much for showing up.
Thank you, I'll still be here for a while, just observing and listening, so thank you all very much.
Sounds perfect, thank you. Up next, do we have a representative from the mayor's office? A representative from the mayor's office? Going once, going twice, sold. Do we have a representative from council member Tommy Waters' office? Council member Tommy Waters?
Aloha Chair DeCavedo and members of the board. I'm Adam Do from Chair Tommy Waters' office. It's been a while since I last reported to this board, but it's good to see the new faces and the old ones. Wow, you guys run a really efficient board, I'm not used to reporting so early in the agenda. I do wanna congratulate the new board members, thank you for your service. Chair Waters, long before he was a council member and representative, was once a neighborhood board member, so he truly knows the value of the neighborhood board system. I did email out our newsletter earlier today, you can also find it on the city council's website. So yesterday was the council's April 4 council meeting. I do wanna, I do have a couple updates that I believe the chair or the board would be interested in. Chair Waters did speak on this last month. The council is currently deliberating deliberating the sewer fee increases, Bill 60, which are scheduled to double over the next 10 years. We are contemplating limiting the increase to 4% this year by using the vacant positions. These are positions that were vacant for three years or more. Chair Waters is passionately concerned about how, about the high cost of living for local families, and is pressing the departments to find other monies so the city does not have to raise these fees. Bill 18 passed third reading. This allows the city to lead by example in protecting our Ina by reducing plastic waste through restriction on sale of single-use plastic bottles, basically water bottles, in vending machines at city facilities. Where we are, as we move forward towards sustainable waste management, it's vital that we support our recycling efforts and reduce what ends up in our landfills to preserve the health and environment for our future generations. Next, Bill 1, City 1, which allows outdoor dining, outdoor restaurant dining in specific areas. This passed in April and was signed into law by the mayor. Kahala residents often dine in Kamaki, where you may be familiar with these parklets. This program originated during COVID times, and Bill 1 would make this program permanent. And then lastly, Bill 24 also passed third reading, which adopts the revised Primary Urban Center Development Plan, also known as the PUCDP. With passage of Bill 24, we're moving forward with the committee-driven plan that will guide development and its infrastructure in a way that supports sustainable growth for everyone. It celebrates the unique character of neighborhoods in the urban core and can help shape future improvements in housing and transportation while protecting the green spaces that make our communities special. Chair Waters stood very firm in keeping Wildlife Kahala, Wildlife Kahala. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Adam? Anybody in the community have any questions for Adam? Please introduce yourself.
Hello, this is Daylon Cam. Related to the outdoor dining program, I don't know if you are aware, but some of those parklets that you mentioned, actually, I think almost all of them in Kamaki were removed recently. Does this mean with making that program permanent, would that open the possibility to those being reintroduced?
Yeah, so it would make it possible for it to be reintroduced into Kamaki. I think a lot of these outdoor dining was focused more in the downtown Chinatown, Takakoa area. If it were to be introduced through, on Wildlife Avenue, there'd be a whole process to make sure the whole community would be, would be on board with that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the community have any questions for Adam? Perfect, Adam, thank you so much for taking the time this evening, it's greatly appreciated.
Great, thank you, Chair.
My pleasure. Right, up next, Representative Tina Grandinetti. Do we have a representative from Tina Grandinetti's office here this evening? Going once, going twice, and sold. Up next, Representative Mark Hashem. Once, twice, sold. Up next, Senator Stanley Chang. Do we have a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office? Going once, going twice. God, you guys are making my life easy today. Up next, resident community concerns. Does anybody in the community have any concerns that they'd like to voice this evening? Any questions, comments? Beauty, oh my god.
Hello.
Oh, hello, who do we have here?
This is Carol Horstko from Kapilani Community College.
Oh, sorry, can you re-say that one more time, please?
Carol Horstko from Kapilani Community College.
Oh, hi, how are you doing? Sorry, we're getting a little bit of fuzziness on the audio on your side.
I'm sorry, I don't have video either, but I'll try to do something real quick and just let you know that the Culinary Institute of the Pacific, all of the buildings are about 99% complete. The Innovation Center is currently being used by a class, and the auditorium will probably be open later in May. The one lagging behind that everybody's waiting for is the restaurant. There are some internal things that are being, still being done that are off-contract. And landscaping work, they are going to put in landscaping very soon, it'll be, for the first phase, they'll put in everything that was there before. The second announcement is that we have a community interpreting workshop on Wednesday of next week from 1:00 to 5:00, and then on Thursday from 9:00 until 1:00. And it is free to the public. We have a speaker coming in from University of California, San Francisco. He's a graduate from UH Manoa. This discussion is about improving access for bilingual people whose first language is not English, and some of the jobs that are available for internationals. I'll put some information in, I'll send it to you later. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carol. And it's actually quite fortuitous you're here this evening. We've been in deep discussions about locations where we would like to hold our Neighborhood Board meetings, and I, for one, have been constantly saying that I would love to see us at the Culinary Institute. Is there any possibility that we might be able to get that done?
Yeah, that is a question that would have to be brought forward to our Vice Chancellor of Administrative Services. I can let him know that the question has come up, but the problem is because of the first use has to, have to go toward educational priorities, and then secondly, if it's a consistent usage, it might be a question that should ask, but I will, how about if I send his contact information to you, Chair?
That would be wonderful, and thank you for even entertaining the question, I appreciate it. Does anybody on the...
Okay, your thing.
Oh, my pleasure. Does anybody on the community have any questions for Carol?
Can you hear me? Carol, this is Aloha. I just wanted to say that Mark and I had a fantastic tour of the Culinary Institute, and it was beautiful. I can't wait for it to open fully and go to the restaurant. It has the best view of Honolulu ever, anywhere. So mahalo for all the good work that you started in developing the CIA, and look forward to seeing it in full completion. Mahalo.
Aloha, and thank you, members of the board, and congratulations. Aloha McGuffey, I was glad to hear that you were voted on to the board.
Beautiful. Do any members in the community have any questions, thoughts, for Carol? Jen, we see you online with your hand raised. Go right ahead, please.
How are you guys? Thank you, Chair. I'm with the Hibiscus Half Marathon, and with your permission, Chair, I'll share the map of the race. It will be, this is our 17th year, is it okay if I share that?
Please, go right ahead.
Okay, let me see if I can get this to work. It's, it's thinking about it. So while that's thinking about it, this is our 17th year for the Hibiscus Half Marathon, 15K and 5-miler, and we have the same exact route as we have every year. No roads are closed, except for, Monster Rod is closed for like, a half an hour, just the, just the part that hits Kapilani Park, just so that the participants can get around that corner onto Paki before, before they open it up to cars. But otherwise, the entire rest of the course is open, so it shouldn't affect anybody going in and out for church or anything like that in the morning. The race starts at 5:45 or 5:30 a.m. for the half marathon, and we have a four-hour time limit, so everyone will be completely off the road, no later than 9:30, but usually by 9:00, almost everybody's done. And it doesn't look like it wants to share, so I apologize about that, but I can send you that map, Chair, if you would like.
Please do.
Okay, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Do any board members have any questions for Jen? Any community members, questions for Jen? We look forward to seeing your event go off without a hitch, always great having these things in our community, so thank you so much for your effort on your behalf, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Chair, and congratulations to Aloha.
Congratulations, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Let's see. Uh, up next, board business. Do I have approval of the regularly drafted minutes? Sylvia, do we have any corrections we'd like to add in?
What I just told Anson is that when you're talking about nine member, board members, there were six and there was one absent. But we should also put down two vacancies as part of the nine statement.
Okay, we will add that in. Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, perfect. Can I get someone to approve the minutes?
I approve the minutes with Sylvia's corrections.
Thank you, thank you. Can I get a second? All in favor? All opposed? Beautiful. All right, up next, presentations and new business is Roberta Hickey Gomez here. Hello, hello, welcome this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I believe I sent in a presentation. I don't know if you have it available, but I also have my laptop with me. We need to connect. No worries. In the meantime, I'll introduce myself again. I'm Roberta Hickey Gomez. I'm from the Mediation Center of the Pacific. A lot of the work that we do is resolving disputes in the community. And we do so in a way that empowers the community, allows the community to take action and to have ownership over their decision-making and agreements in resolving disputes. And it's just alleviating a lot of the burden that goes on to the court and just recognizing that the community has power to resolve its own issues. I believe so, but I also have my laptop if that's a serious enough. Email is roberta@mediatedhawaii.org.
While we're waiting on this to go up, Isu, I know that you're here on behalf of the YMCA if you'd like to speak as well. Perfect. And then Roberta will have you go after if you're already set and ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. I was downloading the Honolulu Alert app while during the intermission. So thank you for inviting me up, Christian. Again, my name is Isu Peck. I'm the new Executive Director at your YMCA, Kamaki Waile YMCA. Just wanting to give greetings and say hello. Also invite you personally to an event next Saturday called Healthy Kids Day, which every YMCA across the nation participates in a community open house. So come on over, enjoy fun and festivities. Fun and festivities, as well as water safety classes for the family, a balloon house, and other wonderful things that our staff are providing. So sorry about the feedback, but just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you. One, or sorry, time is from nine a.m. to one p.m. Thank you.
Awesome. Now, for those of you unfamiliar with the works that YMCA has been doing in our community, Isu was lovely enough to take some time with me the other day, walk me around. I actually learned to swim at that YMCA and hadn't been there since I was five. And some of the programs, the community outreach, community events, even community classes that they're hosting there, extraordinary. So if you guys are looking for workout, gym, any of that sort of support in the community, get to know some people in your community, the YMCA is doing a really great push right now. So I encourage you to go by, say hello to Isu, and check out the different facilities that they got working on, the different programs they got moving.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Roberta, how we looking? Need a few minutes? No worries. A quick informational briefing. The Hawaiian Electric Company is doing utility pole replacements and placements at the following addresses, 4806 Kahala Avenue, 1472 Inacoa Avenue. If these homes are located next to you, please check them out. They dropped an electrical pole on my neighbor's property right next to my house. It is ugly. It was not placed well. So if you have an opportunity to have some say in this, please do. You will thank yourself. Don't make the mistake I did, please.
Think about balancing this while I speak into the microphone. What's up? Is it all right if I move in here? Okay, so a little bit of history about the early eviction mediation program. The early eviction mediation program is coming out of Act Fifty Seven, which is a part of the COVID pandemic eviction moratorium. We initially targeted about 6,000 tenants who were in arrears in Oahu. We mediated 1,342 cases out of 3,050 cases, achieving an eighty-five percent agreement rate and keeping about ninety percent of tenants in their homes. The program inspired in August of 2022, but the Mediation Center of the Pacific continued forward with private funds. Initially, we had a limited series of contractors and we had about a seventy-three percent agreement rate. But as we moved forward, we were able to coalesce a private series of mediators who are able to be dedicated just to this program. What's nice about this program is that it's neutrally beneficial, is about dealing with the housing crisis, and it is for the benefit of both landlords and tenants. On the landlord's side, we know that it's one to four months in processing for collecting on evictions. And that doesn't include collecting on arrears that were prior to the eviction process. It also can be anywhere up to six months in the current court log. We also know that for landlords, it can cost anywhere between $500 and $10,000 for an eviction. We know that agreements that foster relationships between landlords and tenants are beneficial for the community. And if a breakdown were to happen post-mediation agreement, landlords can take that to the courts and show that they've made good faith, honest effort to be able to resolve and work with the community. We also know that it's a benefit to tenants. There's greater housing stability and predictability in whether that's staying within the home or whether that's coming to a reasonable timeframe for move-out. We know that this can be a special concern in high cost of living areas like Hawaii. We also know that agreements between landlords and tenants, again, foster greater community stability. Fewer evictions on record are helpful for tenants to be able to get their next apartment. And they can be stigmatized. It can impact their future housing decisions. And it can also impact them if they're Section Eight tenants. It can be catastrophic because they can be removed from the program for an eviction, and that can lead to houselessness. So overall, it's about providing greater community stability. So how the program has been progressing so far in this fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we've grown about twenty percent to take up thirty percent of these landlord-tenant evictions. The remainder coming to us from District Court. So this program is focused on all early evictions. So that means when tenants are first in arrears, prior to receiving a notice, when they've received a notice, anything up until going to a court of law to be able to resolve, we're trying to resolve as quickly as possible, working with landlords and tenants. Our rate of agreement is anywhere between ninety-two and ninety-three percent. And we've had a sixty percent rise from Q1 into Q2 of this fiscal year. The way the program works is it's primarily over Zoom and landlords and tenants have the opportunity to talk with the help of an impartial mediator to negotiate agreements. If English isn't their first language, we provide interpreters. Meetings are held remotely through Zoom. If a client doesn't have internet access, we provide access in-office. We're also working with partners in the community to expand that access within the community. So before mediation, participants are required to sign a confidentiality agreement. Each session is scheduled for an hour and a half at a day and time that works for both parties. And if you reach an agreement, you'll electronically sign and take that forward with you. On the scheduling side, cases can be scheduled within a forty-eight hour period. And typically, they're resolved within a three to five business day window. We're also incorporating tools into this program, one of which is the eviction cost calculator. This takes all of the costs that are associated with eviction because, as I mentioned before, it's anywhere between $500 and $10,000. But this allows you to input all the information on the size of your units, however many units you have, average cost of paint, changing locks, wear and tear, et cetera. And what it does is it gives you a picture of how those specific costs that you will incur on your units will affect you fiscally. So this gives landlords an idea of how much it would cost them to move forward in eviction process and whether or not it's beneficial to really settle and find an agreement here that works for both parties. We also, as we said, we're a facially neutral program. And because of that, we also have a budget calculator for tenants, for them to be able to assess their fiscal viability for staying in this place. Is this the right fit for them? And then it also will allow them to be able to assess whether or not they're able financially to withstand the agreement that they're coming to, if they're coming to a payment agreement over a longer term. We're also working on legislation that's making its way through the ledge as we speak. It's currently in committee to be able to resolve. But this would allow for notice, a notice period for landlords to be able to schedule mediations prior to going through the eviction process. We're also working on Ten and Kaku Hub. So as I mentioned before, the Mediation Center of the Pacific provides a space where people can mediate from if they have technology access issues, difficulty with Zoom, et cetera. So we've been working with community providers who are hubs in the area that people normally go to for services. And in doing so, we've been training them on what mediation is, how it can be beneficial, and also giving them the tools to be able to walk people through an online intake form, as well as if they have the space to provide a space for a community to be able to zoom in if they need that. So this is our QR code for our website, mediatehawaii.org. If you would like to schedule a mediation or refer someone to this, we suggest going to our website, click Contact Us and Request a Mediation. You'll be taken to this form right here. It will ask you for your demographic information for you, the other party, the issues trying to be resolved. And again, as I said, we get back to you and to try and schedule within a forty-eight hour period. So it's beneficial for all parties. This program is completely free for both landlords and tenants. And the idea is to really empower the community to find solutions that work for them. Thank you so much for your time. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that presentation. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Roberta?
Hey, Roberta. What does a typical agreement look like, I guess, for the both parties? Like, what is that? What is it? Yeah.
So they can vary greatly. So as I mentioned, they could include a payment plan. They could include a move-out date. It varies from party to party. So they're very tailored to whatever people's needs are. But we do see a lot of payment plans. So sometimes we'll have either a couple hundred dollars either every week, every other week, or added on to their rental payment for a period of time that's reasonable. Sometimes we'll have, depending on the size of the rent that's in arrears, we'll have a waiver of certain amount of fees, or if there are any late fees, those can be waived. So that's part of the negotiation process. It really depends on the parties that are involved.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Roberta, who normally initiates these? Is it usually the landlord?
So usually, we have tenants initiate. But we do have a growing number of landlords and property managers who are reaching out to us. We have landlords and property managers that we've developed relationships with who continue to reach out to us because they've had positive experiences. Part of our role in coming to these neighborhood boards, as well as other community events, is to really engage more with the landlord and property management community. We know there are a lot of mom-and-pop landlords out there, so having this information is helpful. And what we see is in the data, it shows us that about thirty percent of early eviction mediation cases are for people who are over fifty-five. And that's both landlord and tenant side. So we know that this issue can be an issue of subsistence for people in their retirement and things of that nature. So what we recognize is that this is a community issue that we're trying to address. We're trying to address it in a facially neutral way, so it benefits both landlords and tenants.
And your funding is all private, you said, donations? You don't get anything from the city or state or federal funds?
Our program in particular doesn't, no. We do apply for like any nonprofit, for city, county funds, when they're available. But this program is primarily funded through private funds, yes.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, community? Happy to take.
Any questions? Thank you for what you're doing, on behalf of both tenants and landlords. Very appreciative. Those of you unfamiliar, the, oh my gosh, the Mediation Center for the Pacific is the gold standard of mediation in the state of Hawaii. Some incredible people working with you guys over there. You're actually listed in all my ownership agreements for all of my companies. If we ever get into a fight with our business partners, so appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you for taking the time and coming down.
Thank you so much for having me.
Greatly appreciate it. My professors in law school would never shut up about you guys. All right, let's see, what else? Gone through it all. We've gone through it all. Oh, announcements. Siding County of Honolulu and the Hawaii Food Bank are partnering to fight against hunger. Neighborhood Assistant Anson Wu, this beautiful gentleman's to the left-hand side of me right here, will be collecting donated canned goods at tonight's meeting. So if anybody has a can of beans sitting in their car, it belongs to us now legally. You must hand it over. There is nothing you can do about that. Next regular meeting for the neighborhood board is going to be Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, seven p.m. We will not be at this location. I repeat, we will not be at this location. This was a one-off meeting. We will be back at the Alawai Golf Course at the clubhouse over there on Kapahulu Avenue on the second floor. It is handicap accessible too, so there are elevators and there are stairs to get up to the top level, unless the Culinary Institute wants to start hosting us in between then. But we will talk about that. Is our representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office back in the house?
Hey there, I am. Aloha, working late tonight during conference.
Good evening, good evening. Oh, good evening, Zephany. Welcome in.
All right, do I have a few minutes?
Go right ahead. We got all the time in the world.
All right, well, we are working late tonight, as you likely heard from any of the other reps or senators. We're conference, we're about halfway through conference, which will be ending next week. So the official end of the legislative session. It's not too late if you are looking to learn more, engage, and track legislation. As we shared at the beginning of the session, we started out with 1,669 bills introduced this session. Going into conference, we were looking at about 206 Senate bills, 245 House bills. And so those are being debated and discussed now. And there'll be lots of decision-making taking place next week. As you may know, those who are following Senator Chang, he serves as Chair of the Housing Committee, Vice Chair of Energy and Governmental Affairs, and as a Member of Judiciary and Water and Land. And let's see, we did discuss your requests last month, Senator Chang. I reiterated that anything he can do to be helpful, he's happy to do so. Please don't hesitate to reach our office. The fastest way to get to us is through the website, which I dropped in the chat, senatorschang.com. We do get the emails that go through there. And we do try to follow up on every single message, every call, and every, you know, walk-in that we get. So we're happy to be a resource. Our April newsletter's out. Really pleased to announce 150,000 in capital improvement for the fish pond roofing project in District. And of course, a million dollars for the Hawaii School for the Deaf and Blind, which is just an outstanding program. They have four campuses, preschool, elementary, middle school, and high school, and completely free. So really, really delighted that the governor has released those. and high school, and completely free, so really, really delighted that the governor has released those funds. And then just one resource I would highlight for you all in case it was missed. The two thousand dollar instant rebate for water solar heating, so that, that is available, um, as part of the Inflation Reduction, Reduction Act. Happy to take any questions. Thanks so much for the accommodation, and, uh, thank you all for, those who have been participating in this session, for hopefully a great session. We've got exactly two weeks left to go, and look forward to seeing you on the other side.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Zephany? All set. Does anybody in the community have any questions for Senator Stanley Chang's office, Mrs. Zephany, Senator Stanley Chang? All right, Zephany, thank you so much for your time. It is greatly appreciated.
All right, you too. Take care. Have a good evening.
You, you too. Up next. What time is it? Oh, they said it couldn't be done, but ladies and gentlemen, we have managed to do a neighborhood board meeting in under an hour. It's an all-time record for us. Uh, no, we're not done yet. We're not done yet. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? What's up? Voting for... Oh, yes, uh, yes. Um, we are currently doing neighborhood board elections online, and, uh, or is this mail-in voting or... Okay, so, uh, mail-in, online, well, that, we're doing voting for the neighborhood board. Um, everybody here who has resubmitted their candidacy, we hope to see you again. Uh, for those of you in the community, we're all pretty great people who do a pretty great job. So if you like the work we do, vote for us. If you don't like the work we do, still vote for us, please. For the love of God, we're just trying to get stuff done here. Uh, but, uh, elections are open. Please vote. Please exercise your voice. Utilize the democratic process to benefit yourselves as this great country intended, so, um. Voting, check. Adjournment? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you so much for coming, and we got it in under an hour. Good job, everybody.